Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening the regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me on the dais is every member of council, including Madam City Manager. Prior to getting started, I'll ask if there's any adjustments that need to be made to our agenda? If there are none, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
So move.
Second?
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we have an agenda. First item for approval would be our consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and our consent agenda passes. On general business, first item for discussion is 2024-461, receipt and presentation of FY 2023/2024 audit report. City Council has requested to acknowledge receipt of the City of High Point Annual Comprehensive Financial Report fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2024. We'll hear from a few folks, but first I'll pass it to Mr. Fitzjohn, Director of Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As we've discussed before, the city council has statutory responsibility to engage an auditor for the financial compliance, to ensure the financial compliance of the city's budgets, accounts, and grants. Tonight, you'll hear a presentation from our auditor, Cherry Becker, specifically Richard Hart, a manager in their practice. We recently, in March of 2024, awarded a three-year-plus-two-years optional extension to Cherry Becker to take us through the audit process from 2024 through 2028, so they will be our auditors for the next few years as well. The audited financial report can be found on the Financial Services section of the city's website effective today. So if citizens want to see it, it's out there. I believe there's a copy that goes to the library as well, and then you all have received a copy. At the end of Richard's presentation, I will ask that you all accept or acknowledge receipt of the audit as well as any related communication and approve the local government commission response that you all were provided earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby. As Bobby mentioned, I'm Richard Hart. I'm Senior Manager of the Charlotte Office for Cherry Becker. Thank you. I appreciate you all having us here tonight. I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know, otherwise I'll try to make it brief for you all. We like to start off with the client service team that we have. Unfortunately, I was not able to be a part of the service team, but Daniel Gogarty was the director for the engagement team, and along with him was Shelby Brown, Haley King, and Malik Robertson. And then we always have a second reviewer to make sure that, you know, the assertions and the assurance was met, and that was Lauren Stroke. So she reviewed behind Daniel. For the results of the audit, we did actually have the audit of the financial statements and the footnotes. We did the audit in accordance with the government auditing standards and the generally accepted auditing standards. We issued an unmodified opinion, which, in layman terms, is just a clean opinion, is the best one that you can receive. Additionally, we completed the city's compliance with the single audit with Uniform Grant Guidance and the governmental auditors in North Carolina audit manual. We also issued an unmodified opinion within relation to the compliance. Internal controls in planning our audit over the financial reporting, we consider internal controls, but we do not opine on them. So our considerations of internal controls is limited to the purpose of ensuring that we test that, we determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit, but we do not provide an opinion, and we do not identify and say that we identify all deficiencies. We do report any deficiencies that we deem necessary to those charged with governance. A material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies that where there's a reasonable possibility of a material misstatement in the financial statements that would not be prevented, detected, or corrected on a timely basis. A significant deficiency is an individual or aggregated combination of deficiencies where it's less severe than a material weakness, but we still deem it necessary to communicate it to you all, those charged with governance. We did not identify any material weaknesses during our audit. We did identify one significant deficiency that I'll mention in a second. During the audit, as I had mentioned, for the Uniform Grant Guidance, we audit major single audit programs. For this year, for the City of High Point, we audited the National Infrastructure Grant, which is locally known as RACE. We also audited the Equitable Sharing Program, and then the State Powell Bill Program. During the audit, we identified a significant deficiency for the RACE program in terms of reporting. What we identified was the reporting was met and the compliance was met, so the reports were submitted as required, but we were unable to identify that someone was second reviewing those reports prior to submission. So we just had a recommendation for the city to ensure that the grant management policy was being followed and that the Uniform Grant Guidance was being followed, and that there is a secondary reviewer prior to the submission. We also have to communicate to you all any corrected or uncorrected misstatements that are identified during the financial statement audit. I'd like to admit or, you know, inform you, no corrected misstatements were necessary. We did identify two uncorrected misstatements that both individually and aggregated management determined were immaterial to the financial statements and determined not to record them. As the auditors, we concurred and determined that was reasonable. The two misstatements are listed here. The first one being an understatement for the beginning net, beginning fund balance for the general fund and the net position for the governmental activities as it relates to an overstatement of the current year revenue for 2.7 million as it's a result of the past year, the 2023 past adjustment related to the sales tax accrual. The second one is an understatement of the beginning fund balance of the opioid settlement fund and the net position of governmental activities, and that's related to the revenue of 549,000 that was reported as unearned revenue in the prior year. Some of the qualitative aspects related to the financial statements and footnotes that we have to communicate. One is any significant accounting policies. We like to refer you to footnote one in the annual comprehensive financial report to look at those significant accounting policies. And then the next is related party relationships. Among the things that we have to communicate to you all is, you know, if we identified any related party transactions that did not happen at arm's length, not in the normal course of business, if it was difficult determining ownership of the city, and if there were any noncompliance of any laws or regulations related to related parties. I'd like to communicate there were none of those items. Significant and unusual transactions are transactions that are outside the normal course of business, and they would otherwise appear out of the unusual timing or nature for the city. We did not identify any significant or unusual transactions for this year's audit. Significant estimates, significant estimates are an important part of the financial statements. Management is required to estimate certain amounts within the financial statements, and those are going to be based off of historical and current year knowledge to be able to create those. Some estimates are a little bit more sensitive than others, as it could, the expectation could differentiate substantially based off of outcome that wasn't foreseen. Some of the, I won't read all of these significant estimates, but I will let you know the majority and the most sensitive for you all would be the landfill obligations, your pension and other post-employment benefit estimates, and then also your unbilled revenue and allowance for uncollectible accounts. As we reviewed these estimates and ensured that we understood the key assumptions and factors, everything seemed reasonable from our standpoint and in line with the accounting standards. Additionally, we have to ensure that the financial statement disclosures are neutral. They were neutral, consistent, and clear. There are a few other required communications that I need to note. One, we did not have any difficulties with management in performing the audit. We did not have any disagreements with management in performing this audit. Additionally, on time to time, we'll have to consult with outside team members outside of the audit team for this engagement that was not required, and we did not consult anyone outside of the engagement team. For management representations, we do request certain representations for management in our management representation letter, and that was dated November 26th, also the date of our audit report. Management sometimes can consult or request information from a second accounting firm or auditor, and then we need to communicate that to you if we're aware. As of today, we are not aware of any such consultations that they would have with other accountants. Generally, we also discuss other things like verbal recommendations and considerations that are not required to be communicated to you all. None of those communications are outside of our normal course of business that we would have with management, and nothing related to any condition to our retention for the audit. As of this date, we're not aware of any fraud or illegal acts that have occurred with the city, and there are also no events or going concerns that would prohibit the city's ability to continue. For independence considerations, which is an important part of having an external auditor, we have to make sure that we're independent from the start to finish of the audit. For our nonattest services that we perform, we do help with piece portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance. We do have to ensure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, and that we need to make sure that we have portions of the data collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance, collection form, which is related to Uniform Grant Guidance audit, the compliance audit. We also reviewed and ensured, and we are not aware of any other circumstances or relationships that would prohibit our independence, and therefore we consider ourselves independent from the city. This slide has a lot of information. I will just leave it with you like this. We audit the financial statements and footnotes. There's a lot of additional information that's very beneficial for you all to read in the annual comprehensive financial report. That will include some information that's considered required supplementary information, supplementary information, and other information. For those other pieces of information, which include introductory, statistical, combining schedules, we do not opine on those. We do ensure that we discuss with management and inquire, and we make sure that it's not, it's not contradictory to the financial statements that we audit, but we do not give an opinion or opine on those other pieces of information. In terms of upcoming financial reporting changes, there will be four upcoming GASB Governmental Accounting Standards Boards changes that are upcoming, compensated absences, I would say is the largest one coming up soon, and then there are going to be certain risk disclosures, financial reporting model improvements, and then also disclosure of certain capital assets. Anytime management wants to discuss these new standards, we're more than willing to Additionally, with North Carolina, we also provide local government commission data, and a part of that is the LGC has performance indicators that they like to report on. The next few slides are just a few of those performance indicators, and they're all the city of High Points within the requirements for all of them. So the first one is the fund balance available for the general fund as a percentage of the expenditures. The minimum requirement is 25%, and the city has 31% for this year. Additionally, for the quick ratio, which would be current assets that are, could be liquidated within a year, over the current liabilities, which would be due and payable within a year, you want to at least have 1.0, which means you can pay your current, current liabilities. The city has a 3.20 ratio, which is good. The same quick ratio also for the electric. Again, you want to have over 1.0, and for the electric, the city has 8.2. Couple of other for the water and sewer. You want to have greater than zero for the operating net income, excluding any depreciation related to capital assets, along with debt and principal interest payments. The city is above zero and has 9.8 million. For unrestricted cash divided by the total expenses, excluding depreciation and debt service principal, you want to have enough to be able to afford to, for the next two months for operations, which is equivalent of 16% for the calculation, and the city is above that and has 82% for the calculation. Water and sewer conditions, this again is just something based off the remaining useful lives of the assets within water and sewer, and they just want to make sure that you have a condition of 0.5 or greater, and the city is in line with that with 0.5. Similar as for the water and sewer, the electric has the same indicators. Again, you want to have operating net income, net of any depreciation or debt principal payments above zero. The city has 12 million. And then again, you want to be able to at least have operational income, unrestricted cash for the next two months, which is 16%. The city is at 68.8%. Additional indicators that we, we have to report to the LGC that we want you to be aware of, there were no financial indicators of concern noted. There were, the audited financial statements are submitted within five months. The change in fund balance for the general fund was positive. Did not have any violations of any budget laws, no late debt service payments, and no violations within the act of, the annual comprehensive financial report. And that is it. If there are no questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, then we'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on a motion to acknowledge receipt of this report? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and the report is received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 2024-458, Resolution of Intent, Annexation 24-03, Consideration of a Resolution of Intent. To establish a public hearing date of January 13th, 2025, to consider a voluntary non-contiguous annexation petition for an approximate 10.8 acre parcel in 7966 National Service Road. With that, I'll go. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Shannon, our Senior Planner with Staff.
Yes, Herb Shannon, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. A Prop Your Honor has submitted an annexation petition for a Tynica parcel in the northern portion of the city. Staff has submitted this resolution of intent for council to adopt, which will establish a public hearing date of January 13th. So we are recommending adoption to set that public hearing date and start the legal advertisement process.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any questions from council regarding this item? If not, then we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mayor Protim Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on a motion to approve this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we have a date for our public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Next item is 2024-459. It's a public hearing regarding historic landmark designation request from downtown High Point. We're going to hear from staff here in a little bit, but prior to doing that, I'll go ahead and open our public hearing and pass it to Ms. Brooke Maynard, Planner with Staff.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brooke Maynard. I'm a planner within the city's Planning and Development Department. As Mayor Jefferson said, I will be presenting the request for designation for One Plaza Center as a Guilford County Historic Landmark. All right, just for your reference, this site is located at the corner of South Main Street, South Rin Street, and East High Avenue. The site is addressed as 101 South Main. The designation would encompass the entire .56 acre lot. All right, some considerably significant aspects of this site is that it was added to the National Historic Register on April 10th of 2024. It is one of the few remaining mid-twentieth-century office buildings in High Point, and it represents a significant architectural and urban development from the City of High Point's urban renewal era. There are three distinct features that are going to be designated with local historic land, or sorry, Guilford County Historic Landmarks. It can encompass the entire site or just portions of the site, so we will see site features, exterior design elements, and interior design elements. Here you will see a part of the exterior design elements. This is the East High Avenue facade. You'll see the unique finessration, which is essentially how the windows are composed. The pyramid will not be in a designated feature because it was created, or it was constructed in 2000, so considerably later. And here we see the South Main Street facade, once again, that unique window finessration, a part of the exterior site features. We see that full concrete wall. And then the South Rin Street facade with those metal finestrations. All right, some more site features here. We see the brick paving, the stairs, the multi-level plaza, concrete planters, metal handrails, ground-level store opening. Here's that ground-level entrance. All right, the interior design elements we see here is that lobby entrance with the The bank vault is also a designated feature with the upper level view. All right, once again, upper level view with the upper level elevators. All right, and I know that was definitely brief, but One Plaza Center was unanimously approved by the Guilford County Historic Preservation Commission in October, October 16th, to be exact, and it was also approved by the City of High Point's Historic Preservation Commission November, November 13th, that is, and staff recommends this to be a designated Guilford County site. Staff now requests that council make a final decision on the designation of One Plaza Center as a Guilford County Historic Landmark. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions for staff?
This is Councilmember Andrew. As, once it's registered as a historical site, then that would limit any future development to retain some of the elements that you described before. Is that correct?
It wouldn't necessarily limit. It would just be under more of a microscope, so there would be standards that it would have to follow in order to maintain that designation status.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council for staff?
I got one from Madam Attorney. Since, does downtown High Point own this building, correct? And so the mayor and I are on the board. Does that present a conflict of interest in that case?
Not for this type of request. If an abundance of caution, you would prefer to ask for excusal from the council, then you may, but for 160D, 109A, the standard for the governing board, for such a, this is an ordinance that you're adopting here, and so the standard is, if you have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact by this decision, and so since this is just a historic landmark designation, I don't believe it qualifies for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is Councilmember Cook. I just, I think I remember that this was also significant because we were one of the first to get a building built in the 70s designated as historic landmark. Is that correct?
That is definitely a point of significance. I don't know if you all saw, there was an article written about it, making individuals feel old who were born in the 70s because this is now considered historic, so that is a fundamental quip.
Any other questions for staff from council? Thank you so much, Ms. Maynard.
Thank you.
We've got one person who signed up to speak, and at this time, council will recognize, Ms. Rebecca McGee. If you'd like to come forward, you're to state your name and address for the record, and you'll have free ministerial justice counsel.
Hi, I am Rebecca McGee. I am with downtown High Point at 515 West English Road, and I just want to ask the council to support this request from our organization. We are the owners of the building. I have been working for about two years on the process of the National Register listing. Yes, you are correct. It is the first 1970s building in North Carolina to be registered on the National Register. That does make it eligible for, eligible for historic tax credits. One of the other things that is really exciting about this that you may or may not have heard is actually we went after an additional historic tax credit, which is a mill tax credit, M-I-L-L, that said that this building was tied directly to a manufacturing mill. We were denied that in April and went and requested it again with additional information, and we got notification in November that we had been accepted for this additional historic tax credit. That is also a massive deal for High Point because it is the first building of its kind where it's a conglomerate of different offices. It's not specifically one manufacturer's office building. So this opens up a big world of historic preservation to people coming online where they have office buildings that may have been the headquarters for a manufacturing mill, but not directly on a manufacturing site. So those are two big aspects that this building has, and we're asking that Guilford County recognize it as a landmark status because of his, its historical significance on so many different levels now. When I was here two, two and a half years ago, and people said, this is not historic, why should we be saving this? And then to find out it has all this history and made all these firsts, it truly is a remarkable building, and I can't wait to see it developed because it is, it's going to be beautiful. I know everybody looks at it now and says it's not the greatest looking right now, but just give me a little bit more time, and I think it's going to really be a centerpiece for downtown. And happy to answer any questions specifically about the building if you have them.
Any questions from council for Ms. McGee? Ms. McGee, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
We don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but at this time, council will welcome anyone who wants to speak for or against this item. You can come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you can speak on the issue. Seeing that there's no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Having heard what we've heard, I'll entertain a motion for us to approve this item.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Cook and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is 2024-467, Consideration of an Appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Council's requested to confirm the appointment of Rusty Mao to the Board of Adjustment, term effective immediately, expiring on June 30th, 2026. I'll make a motion to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by me and seconded by Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item, 2024-468, It's Reappointment to High Point Housing Authority. Council's requested to confirm the reappointment of Dr. Natuma Ja to the High Point Housing Authority, term effective immediately and expiring on December 22nd, 2029. I'll make a motion to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made by Mayor Protim Holmes. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. At this time, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, to add to our closed session one item for economic development. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognized by Mayor Protim Holmes. Any discussion on that motion to suspend rules and add this item for economic development? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Before, we entertain a motion to go into closed session. Are there any announcements from the DAIS? I'll start. I want to wish a very happy birthday to Councilman Dr. Patrick Harmon.
Well, thank you.
If the mics weren't messing up, Patrick, I'd sing to you, but.
Yes, thanks for the mics.
I don't need anything messing up my, my tenor voice, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Absolutely. Any other announcements from the DAIS?
Mention the school.
That's right. We did a moment of silence earlier for the horrific event in Wisconsin. Some of you may have seen it on the news. Breaks my heart every single time, and no words probably can resonate for that, but our thoughts and prayers are with the loved ones, with the family, with the community, those impacted by this in a very deep and significant way, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well. I'll be the one to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. By the time we see everyone, it'll be a new year, and so grateful for the blessings that are upon this city. With that.
I did say this at Finance Committee, but now that we're, I just wanted to say a special thank you to Southwest Renewal Foundation, City of High Point, and all the different partners. Thank you, Damon, so much. I know you work so hard, Bobby, and, but anyway, it says the EPA just made the largest ever environmental justice grant ever, and it came to the High Point, to High Point for 18.5 million dollars, and I just congratulate everyone that worked so hard on it, and congratulations to City of High Point.
Awesome, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Any other announcements or comments? With that, is there a motion to go into closed session?
No move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Councilmember Peters to go into closed session for purposes of economic development and personnel. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we will now go into closed session. We'll be in the third floor conference room, and we'll adjourn thereafter. Thank you all.